Good morning and welcome to the January 26, 2022 City Council meeting. We're going to begin with Councilman Nguyen giving the invocation followed by the pledge. If you will please stand with me.
Heavenly Father, in your words, you have given us a vision of that holy city to which the nations of the world bring their glory. Behold and visit, we pray, the cities of the earth. Renew the ties of mutual regard which form our civic life, help us to be able leaders, enable us to serve our community, that we may pray peace will prevail with righteousness and justice with order, and that men and women from different cultures and with differing talents may find with one another the fulfillment of their humanity through Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we're going to begin with the approval of the minutes from November the 10th, 2021.
Move to approve as presented.
Motion by Westbrook, second by McGee. Any further discussion? Also, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We got a couple of wards. I think we're going to come down for these.
You want to do your presentation first, though, Kedrick?
We'll come down in a minute.
Item A1 is an annual award. We normally get an award for our budget and for our annual financial report. And this particular one is our annual financial report. So it's a request the City Council consider accepting, the Certificate of Achievement Award for Excellence in Financial Reporting from the Government Finance Officers Association of the United States and Canada for the City of Tyler Fiscal Year 2019/2020 Comprehensive Annual Report. And this is our 35th year to get this award, and it is judged by an impartial panel from what we call GFOA, Government Finance Officers Association. And they basically judge it to make sure that it demonstrates full disclosure and that it has the necessary information in it that any readers would need to obtain as far as our financial condition of the city. So having said that, we have a ward down front. And that concludes my presentation.
Kedrick, staff, thank y'all for what you do. Thirty-five years is a long time to be getting this award. So appreciate what you do, what you do for the community. You're great. So thank you. Appreciate y'all. Do we have a video?
Yes.
And then we have a video. If you're watching later. First, we have Asensioan Bababinas. I don't know if Asensioan is here or not. Is he here? Not here, but we did give him an applause. And we've got Deborah Ashen, who is here. Twenty years of service, Goodman Museum Special Event Supervisor. Come on. Deborah, I got to say, we've worked together how many years now? It seems like ten when we started the Burford Park project years ago. And I live two doors down from the park. And every weekend or whenever there's an event, Deborah's always there. It doesn't matter if it's on a Saturday or a Sunday. At night, she's always there, whether it's livings in the park or whatever. So I don't know how many hours a week you work, but I know there's probably more than forty. Anyway, we thank you for what you do and make all of it better. Right, Kyle, Z1.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. This first item is a request that the City Council consider recommending an ordinance or approving an ordinance, making an uncontestable finding that all territory included within the City of Tyler since December 31, 2001, is part of the city. This is actually an annual thing that we do to eliminate any potential challenges to the validity of any historical annexations over the past 20 years. As you can see here on the map, the orange area is the city limits as of December 31, 2001, which was 20 years ago. And so again, we renew this every year. We adopt this, and the plan that is on the commission by a six-zero vote recommended approval.
Any questions for Kyle? I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve, Z1.
Second.
Motion by Curtis, second by Westbrook. Any further discussion? Also, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Z2.
This item is a zone change request from R1A Single Family Residential to M1 Light Industrial District. This is on Robertson Road in Council District Number Two. The purpose of the request is to allow this property to be zoned for industrial use similar to the other properties in that vicinity. The adjacent properties to the north and east are R1A Single Family and are developed with a single-family home to the northeast and then undeveloped land to the north. And then the properties to the south and west are currently zoned for industrial use and are used with a goodwill distribution center as well as some other warehouse uses. The request is consistent with the future land use guide identifying the area as business or office park. The applicant, again, owns several adjoining properties which are intended for industrial use, and the applicant plans to continue that with this property. Of the five notices that were sent, there were returned in favor or in opposition to the request, and the plan that is on the commission by a six-zero vote recommended approval.
Who was the reason for the opposition?
Oh, we, well, there was a little bit of confusion early on. So we did initially have a letter from the property to the northeast, the corner there, the house, and they were under the impression that their property was being rezoned. After we talked to them about that, they were okay with the, and they retracted their opposition.
Okay.
As of right now, there's no opposition to the request.
Any questions or comments for Kyle?
Second.
Motion by McGee, second by Nguyen. Any further discussion? Also, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Z3.
This next request is a zone change from C1 Light Commercial District to PCD Land Commercial District, and this is to allow for the development of a self-storage facility. The adjacent properties to the north are zoned R1A, are developed with single-family homes. To the east are C2 and R1A, again, developed with single-family homes and commercial uses. And then to the south are zoned C2 and C1 Light Commercial District, developed with commercial uses. And the property to the west is owned by the applicant, but is currently zoned for single families, that strip of land there, I believe, that's for utility easement. The, this request is consistent with the, consistent with the future land use guide identifying it as mixed-use center. Again, the applicant proposes, they have developed a site plan, a site plan as you can see here, to develop a self-storage facility. The site plan is compliant with the requirements for buffer yards adjacent to the residential properties to the north and the east. Of the notices that were sent out, we didn't receive any in favor or in opposition to the request. At the planning and zoning commission meeting, we did have some neighbors to the northeast there voice their concern about safety and screening from the development. As you can see here, the applicant is providing the required buffer yard adjacent to the residential property. And so that big green area is not going to be developed. That's the, one of the advantages of the site plan being approved this way is that if anything changes on here, it would have to come back to the City Council for consideration. And with that, the plan that is on the commission by a six-zero vote recommended approval.
All right. We do have a card here from Jeff Hamilton, the engineer for the project. So if anyone has any questions or comments for Kyle or for Jeff, speak up. No questions, comments? I'll entertain a motion.
Similar.
Second.
Motion by McKeller, second by Curtis. Any further discussion? Also, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
This next request is a request for a thoroughfare closure of unapproved portion of Coke Drive. This is adjacent to Golden Road. The applicant's requesting the closure of this right-of-way to allow for the, allow for them to incorporate their driveway into the property. Currently, their driveway is located within this unapproved right-of-way, as you can see here. And so they would be entitled to half the right-of-way, and they'd have to replant that, replant that into their property upon, or after it's approved within six months. The, of the 11 notices that we sent out, zero were returned in favor or in opposition to the request, and the plan that is on the commission by a six-zero vote recommends approval of the thoroughfare closure subject to the abandoned right-of-way being replanted within six months.
And there's no utilities?
There is a sewer line running through there. They would have to dedicate right-of-way for that, or easement for that.
Any other questions for Kyle?
Move to approve, Z4. Second.
Motion by Nguyen, second by Westbrook. Any further discussion? Also, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Z5.
This is a zone change request from C2 General Commercial District to R1B Single Family Residential District. The applicant's requesting the change to develop detached single-family homes on these properties. The adjacent properties to the north, or north, property to the north is developed with an apartment complex and is the location of a power line easement. And then also, the properties to the east are currently undeveloped. To the west are C2, our general commercial district, and are developed with, developed and being developed with commercial uses. Then to the south is currently developed with single-family homes, R1B, similar to what this, the proposal here is. And so the, the future land use guide identifies the property as mixed-use center. This will be consistent with that. And of the notices that we received, zero were returned in favor or in opposition to the request, and the plan that is commissioned by a six-zero vote recommended approval.
Any questions or comments for Kyle?
Second.
Motion by McGee, second by Curtis. Any further discussion? Also, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Z6.
Last request is a request for an annexation of approximately 14.37 acres of land. This is located near the Crossing Development. The applicant's requesting the annex 14 acres of land and to zone it for R1B, similar to the area to the north there, just a continuation of that form of development. And the, the future land use guide would be updated to, or established as single-family medium-low density. Of the notices that were sent, there were returned in favor or in opposition to the requested annexation. And the, the plan that is commissioned by a six-zero vote recommended approval to annex the 14.37 acres of land, as well as to expand the boundary of City Council District Number Two, the boundary of the Tyler extraterritorial jurisdiction, authorize the city manager to sign a written agreement for provision of city services, again, to establish a future land use guide of single-family medium-low density, and to adopt the R1B zoning classification for this acreage.
Is the timber still on that track? Do you know?
Pardon me?
The timber, the trees?
Take it back a picture. You can see that there.
You know, recently, we passed that ordinance for you can burn your trees.
Right.
So it seemed like that's bringing people annexing into the city.
We've been seeing quite a few annexations as a result of that. And so, yes, this site is over 10 acres, so they could, they'd be eligible to take advantage of the recent change, and that's likely why we're seeing it coming in now.
Like it. Any other questions for Kyle? Motion by McGee, second by McKeller. Any further discussion? Also, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Kyle. Hi, Steve.
Good morning, Mayor, Council.
Good morning.
City Manager, Steve Thompson, your airport manager. We come to you today with a request to amend the rates, the parking rates at the airport, but really with two goals in mind. And I'll just show you the first, this is the equipment we have out there. Our first goal in raising the hourly rate for long-term parking from 75 cents to a dollar is really aimed at eliminating the use of coins in our machines. And as our equipment continues to age, our maintenance group, Mitchell Time, that works on the equipment, tells us that we're one of the last groups that still uses coins in this type of equipment. And we constant, not constantly, but we occasionally see malfunctions with the equipment. And the more moving parts that are involved, obviously, the more opportunity for malfunction. So by simply raising this rate by 25 cents per hour, we can eliminate the use of coins at the airport and hopefully extend the useful life of that equipment. So that's the goal in that first change. The overall cap will still be $7 a day, so this will only affect folks that are only in there for very brief amounts of time. But again, it's that increase of 25 cents will again help us eliminate the use of coins with the machines. The second piece, the second goal, or the second part of the change in the ordinance would be to raise the cost for the lost ticket fee from $50 to $75. And the ordinance actually currently states that that's the level, but about four years ago, back in 2017, it was asked that the airport use the $50 rate rather than the $75 rate. So this wouldn't really be a change in the ordinance, just bring the rate up to what it is published today. Our thinking behind that is that it becomes more of a deterrent for folks to not lose their tickets. So it's not going to be a huge increase in revenue. Last year, 2021, we saw 123 times that the lost ticket fee was exercised. And I have to mention that we absolutely have the ability to adjust that. So if someone comes in for two days and they lose their ticket, they can come to us with a flight itinerary. We can look at our cameras. We will absolutely adjust that to make sure they were only charged for the correct amount. But what we saw last year was of those 123 times the lost ticket fee was exercised, only five times did people come to us for an adjustment. So that tells me that many times folks pay that, and maybe they end up paying less than what they would have paid if they had paid the 10-day, two-week period charge that they might have seen instead. So again, the request is to increase it from $50 to $75, which is the current rate that's in the ordinance.
So what you're saying, sometimes it's beneficial to lose your ticket?
We would like to remove that opportunity. Didn't want to phrase it that, obviously, but that is the case. So our request, then, is that the City Council consider adoption of an ordinance amending Tyler City Code, Chapter 12, to amend long-term parking fees for city-provided parking areas surrounding the West Side Terminal Site at the Tyler Pounds Regional Airport. Any additional questions?
Any questions for Steve?
Will the machine change on the first part with the?
You know, the first step would be to change the signage, and I was actually just thinking about that yesterday, that I don't know that, initially, we would put a cover over the coin slot, but I think what we'll first do is put "No coins, please." And, but if some person shows up and only has four quarters in their pocket, we'll probably leave the capability there still, see how that works. But if we get to a point where we really need to cover that slot, we would basically just cover the slot and not allow coins at all.
So it's more that the coins are just causing a problem?
Correct.
Move to approve, A1.
Second.
Motion by Nguyen, second by Curtis. Any further discussion? Also, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Steve.
Okay, thank you.
Good morning again, Mayor and Council. You have item O2 before you. This is a request the City Council consider approving the sale of Tyler Water and Sewer System Revenue Bonds, and this is a new series, 2022. We did an initial presentation to you all on December 8. Stephen Anderson, our financial advisor, did that presentation, just to give you a brief glimpse of the market and kind of what we were expecting once we made it to the final sale date. We did have a final sale yesterday, and Stephen is here to go over the details on that for us. So at this point, once he concludes his presentation, I would recommend that you all take an action on this item and approve the sale of these Tyler Water and Sewer System Revenue Bonds, new series, 2022.
Thanks, Kedrick.
Thank you, Kedrick, and my colleague Paul Jason is back there as well. So as Patrick mentioned, we took bids yesterday on these bonds via a parity online bidding system. We also, between December and now, went through a rating process, and despite COVID, despite the amount of debt that the city has now and in the future, we were able to maintain the double A-plus rating. And I'd like to say that when we go through these rating processes, we get a lot of very detailed questions about your audit and the numbers and the cash flows. And for the past several bond issues, those questions have worked their way down to Jim Yankar, who's sitting back here. This is the last bond issue that he will be working on for the city because he's retiring after working here for a good while. So I just wanted to say we appreciate him working here, but I know there's good backup behind him as well. But it's been a pleasure working with him. So for this bond issue, the proceeds were $44 million that will be deposited into the city's construction fund. And the bonds have a level amortization over 30 years, similar to what we showed you in the meeting in December. We received seven bids. The winning bidder was Samco Capital Markets out of Dallas at a 2.51, 2.519%. We showed you a 5.2% at the meeting in December. We had 25 basis points of cushion built in. The market rates moved up and took exactly that amount. So rates in the last couple of weeks have moved up about that 25 basis points, the cushion we had. And so I think on the last few bond issues, we've not hit that cushion. So in fact, it's probably gone the other way. So we are going to be keeping an eye on the interest rates and the things that the Fed does over the next few months. The city will have the right to repay these bonds or call these bonds on March 1, 2032. So it's a 10-year call. And if you approve this and all goes as planned, we will close on February 17. Just to show you the bids that came in, you can see Samco was the winning bidder at 2.519. The cover bid was 2.523, so pretty close. And that's actually Bank of Oklahoma in Texas that they market themselves as Bank of Texas, but it's actually BOK Bank of Oklahoma. And then you see Huntington and City, Hilltop, Robert Barrett and Morgan Stanley, the other bidders, who were happy getting that many bids. And so that's, that's good. It shows there's a lot of demand for your bonds, and it was a very competitive process. Now, this is the debt service on the bonds. And just pointing out, you see the principal that's being paid back is $41,369,000, yet you received $40,40 million in bond proceeds. And the reason for that, you look at those coupon rates, and you see that they're five and four and three, and in all cases, higher than the 2.5 true interest costs. And in order to do that, as you look from the sources and uses, we actually get a premium from the winning bidder. So we reduce the bond par amount because we don't want extra proceeds. We only want 44 million. And the reason they do that, they want those higher coupons, for one, to sell the bonds at a higher price, that's how they make their profit, and number two, to get more tax-exempt interest because the rates are so low. And so they pay the city a premium as we just lower the bond size. But we end up with the 44 million that we need for the construction fund. And so just moving ahead, moving ahead, we took the bids yesterday. You're considering this this morning, and we would go through the process of having Attorney General approval between now and February 17. Norton Rose Fulbright, your bond attorney, will take care of that. And then, and then we will close. So as Kedrick said before, we do recommend that the City of Tyler award $41,360,000 Water and Sewer System Revenue Bonds Series, new series, 2022, to Samco Capital Markets. Mayor, be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions for Stephen?
You know, for the folks that don't realize, the decision to spend $44 million on the sewer is not something that we decided, hey, let's go spend $44 million on sewer. I mean, it's part of the city's EPA consent decree, so we don't have a choice of whether or not we spend the money. We've got to, we've got to upgrade the system. And everything seems to be going in line and in order and on time, so I think we're headed into a good spot. One thing that I don't think you covered, and maybe Kedrick needs to, I mean, there is a regulatory compliance fee.
Correct.
That is, that is going to change in October. Maybe you covered this and I went to sleep.
Yes, you're correct, Mayor.
Yes, you're correct, Mayor. Currently, that regulatory compliance fee is eight dollars and thirty-four cents a month per customer. And so this bond issue will increase that to thirteen dollars and forty-two cents. But we're not, that's not going to go into effect until October first, twenty-twenty-two.
I have a question. So then, does that mean that the water bills for our customers will increase?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, because we get calls every single day in regards to that. So I wanted to make sure we brought that forward.
Yes, that will directly impact our customers. I would like to add that even with those fee increases, our rates are still very competitive compared to other cities around the state.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Stephen or Kedrick?
Move to approve O-two.
Second.
Motion by Curtis, second by McKeller. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Stephen.
Thank you.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. See you today.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor.
Back in October, we noticed some issues with our shower locker room downstairs. Based on further inspection through ERI and Servpro, there'd been a long-term leak through the showers into the locker rooms, into the restrooms there that resulted in significant damage. Once we ended up demolishing everything because of demo and the mold remediation, it took all the walls out. Some of the walls that were holding the actual structure had rusted up to two and three feet up into the wall. Probably the leak had been going on for probably fifteen-plus years, and because resulted in significant damage to our locker rooms. From there, we went out working with Jennings Engineering and come up with a plan to deal with this. We solicited bids, and those were opened in early January, receiving two final bids from Paragon Construction in the amount one-hundred-and-eighteen-thousand-eight-hundred-eleven dollars with a nine-thousand-five-hundred-and-four-dollar contingency, but also Garrett and Associates. And based on those bids and those moving forward, it's recommended that the city council authorize the city manager to award the overall load bids to execute a contract with Paragon Construction Associates of Tyler, Texas, to furnish all necessary materials, equipment, superintendents, and labor necessary to complete the renovations of the police department, Ferguson Street Station, men's restroom, and showers per project specification sheet drafted by Jennings Architecture not to exceed one-hundred-and-twenty-eight-thousand-three-hundred-and-sixteen dollars and sixty-two cents.
Any questions for Chief Tuller?
Move to approve in one. Second.
Motion by Westbrook, second by Winn. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Jimmy.
Thanks, sir.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. I'm before you today to discuss Phase Two of the Neighborhood Services renovation project. In January of twenty-twenty-one, the city council was gracious enough to approve a renovation project at the Neighborhood Services Building located on Gentry Parkway. As a part of that renovation, we were to do some outside work to our parking area. In looking at the parking area, it was discovered that we had a large tree on the edge of the property right on Grand between DNN and the actual Neighborhood Services Building that was causing some damage to the public right-of-way. That particular tree caused the gutter system to be uprooted, and it's diverting water from the street into the parking lot. Now, inside the parking lot, there is a drainage system in there, but you can see on this one rainy day that that drainage system is well overwhelmed. We originally thought that there was a problem with the actual storm drain on Grand, but when we had Jeff Kurt, our storm water manager, to go out there and take a look at it, it was determined that there was nothing wrong with the actual storm drain, but it was, in fact, the gutter system and the tree that was causing the disturbance. It's actually also caused some issues with the entry point of the actual driveway to the Neighborhood Services Building. So we cannot finish Phase Two before we get this particular situation corrected. And so I'm before you today to ask for an amendment to the contract with Garrett and Associates to include this work, to remove the tree, to actually redo the right-of-way system outside of the property so that we don't have the flooding that you see occurring right here. The amount of the contract was a little over forty-eight thousand dollars. We are going to, or we did go to HAF sent to get them to approve that particular expense. They approved it at their last meeting, and I'm before you today to ask your authorization. And I'm available for any questions if needed.
Any questions for Renissa?
Renissa wants the trees removed. Are you all going to do any further landscaping, plant another tree, or not plant a tree so you don't have this in the future, but any landscaping, or just grass?
Grass.
We're letting her off easy.
No, you're doing very well.
Motion by McGee, second by Curtis. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Renissa. Leanne?
Good morning, Mayor and Council.
Good morning.
At the December eighth council meeting, it was approved to award the Nobly Young Project to HAF Associates for Design Services. We have negotiated the price, so today I'm just coming back before you with the recommendation to request that the city council consider authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with HAF Associates to prepare Nobly Young Park design plans in the amount of seventy-seven thousand dollars.
Any questions for Leanne?
Right. Move to approve.
Motion by McGee, second by McKeller. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, Leanne. All right, we are to the consent agenda. Does anything need to be pulled, or...
Move to approve as presented.
Second.
Motion by Westbrook, second by McKeller. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. City managers report.
Mayor and Council, I was kind of concerned that Leanne might steal my first note that I had to share with you, and it was about Nobly Young Park. So really, the kind of work on that has already begun. We've begun, as y'all just did, with the approval of that contract with HAF and Associates. But also, we're taking bids for the demo of the current skate park, the pavilion, and the restroom, because with this project, the skate park will disappear, but we'll be building for a new pavilion, new restrooms out there. And so we're waiting for those bids to come in. We expect this project to begin quickly due to the deadline being at the end of July. And so the park will be closed, though, once the demo begins in order to, because of the amount of just construction that's going to be going on at Nobly Young Park. One of the things I just want to kind of brag also, staying on parks here, is about a request that came in over at our North Side Park. I don't know how many of y'all kind of familiar with North Side Park. It's pretty much, it's actually the old landfill of Tyler from decades and decades back, that you can't build anything on, but we can have as just a passive recreation area. And typically, right now, what the primary use up there is for kind of a RC airpark, that you'll have remote flyers coming out there and using that area. We did have a person who has a disability that was unable to get to that area regularly and came to us. And Parks then looked to figure out how to put in a brand-new ADA sidewalk in parking spaces up there at the North Side RC Airpark. And that project is now complete. And so that provides easy access to the pavilions to be able to fly the RC airports. And the sidewalk walks and parking spaces requested by the citizen, and he has said it is perfect after he's been able to have the pleasure of using it. And then finally, one of the things, you know, we don't often note about sales tax, but there is just because of the kind of the community, especially people always wonder how did Christmas sales go, or how did... I do want to kind of bring forward as far as our sales tax figures. After our last council meeting, we had those numbers coming in. And so what we had that came in showed that we were collecting about four-point-nine million dollars for what would be our January two thousand twenty-two, which would have been reported to us. And this is for sales that were in November of twenty-twenty-one, so at the beginning of your kind of Christmas shopping season. This is a thirty-six-point-one-five percent increase over the previous year at that same time period. So you can see just kind of as far as the kind of retail activity that's going on in the community. Statewide, they saw a monthly average of about twenty-five-point-five-nine percent increase in sales tax revenue collected by cities. So you can see that we're even doing better than what you're seeing as far as the average throughout the state.
Wow. It's good. Any other comments for Mr. Broussard?
Even though our consumers are really patronizing online purchases and so on, it would be nice, too, if they would also spend a little bit more money in the restaurant community also, too.
I agree with that.
I don't know how we can encourage that, but anyhow.
We are going to go into executive session, but before I do that, what I would like to do, if I may, we've got some students back there from UT Tyler that I want to embarrass. So can y'all stand up to be recognized? These, yeah. These young people are, we're going to go through a program, a mentor-mentee program, which we did before COVID, and it was very successful, where they shadowed us and we shadowed them, and it went on for many months. And I'm still Facebook friends with the person that I shadowed. And you do develop these relationships, and it's really great. So we're all looking forward to shadowing you and you shadowing us. So thanks for participating with this. So thanks for being here. The city council may go into executive session under Texas Government Code, Section 551.071, litigation deliberation regarding the following: pending our contemplated litigation involving the East Texas Municipal Utility District and the City of Tyler. Pending our contemplated litigation involving the City of Tyler and Netflix, Hulu, Disney, and other video service providers. Executive session item number two, under Texas Government Code, Section 551.087, economic development deliberation regarding the following: possible offer of financial or other incentive to a prospect and to consider financial and other information about the prospect project with which the city is conducting economic development negotiations that could lead to a partnership in Tyler. We don't expect any action on these items, but we may be a bid. So you're more than welcome to stay, or you can leave. Either way, we're glad to hear. We are going into executive session.
We are going to go into executive session, but before I do that, what I would like to do, if I may, we've got some students back there from UT Tyler that I want to embarrass. So can y'all stand up and be recognized? These young people are, we're going to go through a program, a mentor mentee program, which we did before COVID, and it was very successful, where they shadowed us and we shadowed them, and it went on for many months. And I'm still Facebook friends with the person that I shadowed, and you do develop these relationships, and it's really great, so we're all looking forward to shadowing you and you shadowing us, so thanks for participating with this. So thanks for being here. The city council may go into executive session under Texas Government Code Section 551.071, deliberation regarding the following: pending our contemplated litigation involving the East Texas Municipal Utility District and the City of Tyler; pending our contemplated litigation involving the City of Tyler and Netflix, Hulu, Disney, and other video service providers. Executive session item number two, under Texas Government Code Section 551.087, economic development deliberation regarding the following: possible offer of financial or other incentive to a prospect and to consider financial and other information about the prospect project with which the city is conducting economic development negotiations that could lead to a partnership in Tyler. We don't expect any action on these items, but we may be a bit, so you're more than welcome to stay, or you can leave. Either way, we're glad to hear. We are going into executive session.[346.88]
1 2 3 4 5 6 7 8 9 10 11 12 13 14 15 16 17 18 19 20 21 22 23 24 25 26 27 28 29 30 31 32 33 34 35 36 37 38 39 40 41 42 43 44 45 46 47 48 49 50 51 52 53 54 55 56 57 58 59 60 61 62 63 64 65 66 67 68 69 70 71 72 73 74 75 76 77 78 79 80 81 82 83 84 85 86 87 88 89 90 91 92 93 94 95 96 97 98 99 100 101 102 103 104 105 106 107 108 109 110 111 112 113 114 115 116 117 118 119 120 121 122 123 124 125 126 127 128 129 130 131 132 133 134 135 136 137 138 139 140 141 142 143 144 145 146 147 148 149 150 151 152 153 154 155 156 157 158 159 160 161 162 163 164 165 166 167 168 169 170 171 172 173 174 175 176 177 178 179 180 181 182 183 184 185 186 187 188 189 190 191 192 193 194 195 196 197 198 200 201 202 203 204 205 206 207 208 209 210 211 212 213 214 215 216 217 218 219 220 221 222 223 224 225 226 227 228 229 230 231 232 233 234 235 236 237 238 239 240 241 242 243 244 245 246 247 248 249 250 251 252 253 254 255 256 257 258 259 260 261 262 263 264 265 266 267 268 269 270 271 272 273 274 275 276 277 278 279 280 281 282 283 284 285 286 287 288 289 290 291 292 293 294 295 296 297 298 299 300 301 302 303 304 305 306 307 308 309 310 311 312 313 314 315 316 317 318 319 320 321 322 323 324 325 326 327 328 329 330 331 332 333 334 335 336 337 338 339 340 341 342 343 344 345 346 347 348 349 350 351 352 353 354 355 356 357 358 359 360 361 362 363 364 365 366 367 368 369 370 371 372 373 374 375 376 377 378 379 380 381 382 383 384 385 386 387 388 389 390 391 392 393 394 395 396 397 398 399 400 401 402 403 404 405 406 407 408 409 410 411 412 413 414 415 416 417 418 419 420 421 422 423 424 425 426 427 428 429 430 431 432 433 434 435 436 437 438 439 440 441 442 443 444 445 446 447 448 449 450 451 452 453 454 455 456 457 458 459 460 461 462 463 464 465 466 467 468 469 470 471 472 473 474 475 476 477 478 479 480 481 482 483 484 485 486 487 488 489 490 491 492 493 494 495 496 497 498 499 500 501 502 503 504 505 506 507 508 509 510 511 512 513 514 515 516 517 518 519 520 521 522 523 524 525 526 527 528 529 530 531 532 533 534 535 536 537 538 539 540 541 542 543 544 545 546 547 548 549 550 551 552 553 554 555 556 557 558 559 560 561 562 563 564 565 566 567 568 569 570 571 572 573 574 575 576 577 578 579 580 581 582 583 584 585 586 587 588 589 590 591 592 593 594 595 596 597 600 601 602 603 604 605 606 607 608 609 610 611 612 613 614 615 616 617 618 619 620 621 622 623 624 625 626 627 628 629 630 631 632 633 634 635 636 637 638 639 640 641 642 643 644 645 646 647 648 649 650 651 652 653 654 655 656 657 658 659 660 661 662 663 664 665 666 667 668 669 670 671 672 673 674 675 676 677 678 679 680 681 682 683 684 685 686 687 688 689 690 691 692 693 694 695 696 697 698 699 700 701 702 703 704 705 706 707 708 709 710 711 712 713 714 715 716 717 718 719 720 721 722 723 724 725 726 727 728 729 730 731 732 733 734 735 736 737 738 739 740 741 742 743 744 745 746 747 748 749 750 751 752 753 754 755 756 757 758 759 760 761 762 763 764 765 766 767 768 769 770 771 772 773 774 775 776 777 778 779 780 781 782 783 784 785 786 787 788 789 790 791 792 793 794 795 796 797 798 800 801 802 803 804 805 806 807 808 809 810 811 812 813 814 815 816 817 818 819 820 821 822 823 824 825 826 827 828 829 830 831 832 833 834 835 836 837 838 839 840 841 842 843 844 845 846 847 848 849 850 851 852 853 854 855 856 857 858 859 860 861 862 863 864 865 866 867 868 869 870 871 872 873 874 875 876 877 878 879 880 881 882 883 884 885 886 887 888 889 890 891 892 893 894 895 896 897 898 899 900 901 902 903 904 905 906 907 908 909 910 911 912 913 914 915 916 917 918 919 920 921 922 923 924 925 926 927 928 929 930 931 932 933 934 935 936 937 938 939 940 941 942 943 944 945 946 947 948 949 950 951 952 953 954 955 956 957 958 959 960 961 962 963 964 965 966 967 968 969 970 971 972 973 974 975 976 977 978 979 980 981 982 983 984 985 986 987 988 989 990 991 992 993 994 995 996 997 998 1000 1001 1002 1003 1004 1005 1006 1007 1008 1009 1010 1011 1012 1013 1014 1015 1016 1017 1018 1019 1020 1021 1022 1023 1024 1025 1026 1027 1028 1029 1030 1031 1032 1033 1034 1035 1036 1037 1038 1039 1040 1041 1042 1043 1044 1045 1046 1047 1048 1049 1050 1051 1052 1053 1054 1055 1056 1057 1058 1059 1060 1061 1062 1063 1064 1065 1066 1067 1068 1069 1070 1071 1072 1073 1074 1075 1076 1077 1078 1079 1080 1081 1082 1083 1084 1085 1086 1087 1088 1089 1090 1091 1092 1093 1094 1095 1096 1097 1098 1099
Back from a time.
(laughing)
But you get like five accounts.
I was trying.
You get like five.
Yeah.
It is not five, five seconds.
But they're all under.
That's right.
The one that won't come out.
Yeah.
I have enjoyed it. It was like my childhood.
All right, we are back from executive session. And we have no action. Thank you all for sticking around. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
We are adjourned.